Call attention to that. I think that partnership with the Indiana Borough Police has been an outstanding move in the right direction, and I commend the board for the foresight and the thought there because it's, it really is, it's, it's been important. It's already paid for itself ten times over as far as I'm concerned. But I did want to just, you know, take a second to acknowledge that.
Rob, just to piggyback on that, let's also recognize the students who brought that to the attention. They need to be commended.
One hundred percent, and that's, that's exactly right. This thing only worked because students saw something and said something, and that's what we said in the communication we sent home was those students have to be commended because they helped, they, you know, they were little heroes that saved the, that saved the day, and that's, that's, you know, that's the only way this works. And that Safe to Say initiative is powerful as well. You know, we got information over the weekend that led us to, to more people that were part of the problem. So we, you know, absolutely, the, the students for reporting it, the fans for complying with the directives that night, I mean, everybody did an outstanding job, and just want to, you know, applaud the community for job well done.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I too would like to thank everybody involved, the administration, the Borough Police, the state police, and the students for, for really stepping up to this, and we're thrilled to have this relationship with the Indiana Borough Police Department. Ron, you're up.
Yes, Mr. President. Just want to give the board an update. Pennsylvania Department of Education did send out a, a release on what they're calling a policy update for special education students. In the school code, it says to age twenty-one, they are now issuing guidance saying it should be till age twenty-two for special education students. We've taken a look at the guidance that's been presented. We are going to, more than likely, our firm will be canvassing the district and the representatives to see who is interested in potentially, I won't say petitioning, we're kind of fighting back on the mandate that, that they're calling it or the, the guidance that they're putting out. And, and just to be clear when we say that, it, it has nothing to do with educating special needs students. You know, we want to, we want to make sure everybody has access to education, faith, everything of that nature. The issue really we're seeing is that they have just made a policy change without really any regulatory authority to do so. It just, the IDA hasn't changed, the school code has not changed, no requirement has changed, but all of a sudden guidance is coming out saying it has to be to twenty-two. So again, with that being said, if it's done correctly, and that's the way it is, then, then we'll abide by it. But right now, again, we're just seeing there's no real regulatory authority for them to be able to do so. So we're taking a hard look at that. I know it's creating a lot of issues for districts who really have a lot of their resources looking at, you know, what the age of the students are, their goals, their IP's, uh, goals are set up for age twenty-one, and we have to kind of look back and, and what that's going to look like for aging students out. So, again, I'll have more information provided, but we may be making requests in the future to see if anybody's interested in, in joining to kind of push back a little bit on that.
Are they suggesting to do that in one year? Just suddenly it goes to twenty-two?
Correct. And they're starting it now, and they're starting it forever according to the guidance, and they're actually asking us to retroactive too. So if someone's aged out at twenty-one, they want to bring it back until they're twenty-two years of age. That's all, Mr. President.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Rob, would you like to, or would you like to have Sue do the honors here?
I think it'd be more appropriate of Dr. Reed.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to welcome our Fulbright teachers that are with us today, under the leadership of Mr. Mike Riggs, who is therapeutic student's supervisor. Uh, maybe. Yeah, I'll, I'll take him thirty-five years as my husband. But IUP and the Indiana School District have partnered in this initiative for several years now, and we are so happy to have the grant and so appreciative of the school district to open our doors, and so appreciative of them leaving their families, their friends to come here. And it's a very, very competitive process for them to be able to be here as Fulbright teachers, so very proud of their accomplishments. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Dr. Riggs. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for supporting this program, Superintendent Heinrich for being very supportive, and we have two principals involved, Mr. McElhaney at the high school and Ms. Erin Eisenman at Eisenhower Elementary School. They've been very supportive of the program, and we couldn't do it without all of you. Also, I'd like to thank the teachers at the high school and at Eisenhower. They do a great job welcoming and supporting our visiting teachers. I don't want to talk any longer. I'm going to let each of them introduce themselves to you, and then we'll take it from there.
Esteemed board members, I am Ravikumar Kohla, teacher of English from India. I'm going to be, I'm teaching the students from grade six to ten, and I work in a remote area, like a rural one, where the facilities for the students are very less. So I want to create more opportunities and learn more strategies which are being implemented over here. Thank you very much.
Robbie, can you tell them who your place was here, please?
Ah, India, so I, I was raised at a senior high school, and my partner teacher is, is Mike Sabatini.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stay. I am from Singapore. Back home in Singapore, I teach English language to grades nine and ten students. My partner teacher at Indiana High School is Mrs. George Ress. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is April Tebelarino, and I'm from the Philippines, and I teach science way back in our country, grade eight, specifically earth science, biology, chemistry, and physics. I'm with Mr. Mike Lemon as my partner teacher, and I'm so thankful and grateful to all of you for accepting us here as Fulbright DAI teacher exchange program students.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Espinoza. I'm representing Mexico. I work as an English teacher in a primary school in Mexico. I'm paired with Tracy Anderson. She works in Eisenhower Elementary School in fourth grade, and I'm really happy with her, and thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Francis Etian from Uganda, and I teach grade five, science. Right now, my attachment here is Miss Helen's school, Indiana Junior, and I'm attached to Dr. Peoples. That's my attachment teacher. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sharifah. I'm from Singapore. I teach in a high school. I teach social studies, basically. My partner teacher is in Indiana High. He is Dr. Nick Water. And thank you for having us this evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophie Magellan-Fei. I'm from Senegal. I teach English in high school, grade ten to twelve, and we're happy to be here today. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steph Milila. I'm from Indonesia. I'm English teacher for grades seven until nine students. My partner teacher is Tara Pangian at Senior High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sunny from Taiwan. I'm from Ushua in Taiwan, and now I, my partner teacher is the Mrs. Walker in Alson in Ushua, and she's very nice, and thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Namaste. I'm Satim Mishra from India. I teach math and science, and here I partnered with Mr. Steve Corrad, and I, I miss my students a lot, and thank you so much for having me here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Moses Galavisi from Uganda. I'm a high school administrator and teacher of English. I teach at General Pepper. My partner's teacher is Dr. Scott Leyden, and I'm at the high school. Glad to be here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kaisparasas. My name is Liana Nera Baxian from Grace. I teach on the more titled in Grace. I'm a social science economist, I specialize in civic education and economy, and I'm the assistant of the Anna's in your high school and my department is Dr. Magnitsk. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ina from Singapore. I teach elementary math and science. I'm at Eisenhower with Lisa Black.
Hello, everyone. I'm Andrea. I'm from Brazil. I teach English to six to twelve grades in southeast Brazil, in the state of Hujani. Nice to meet you all, and thank you for having us here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nora Alfie. I'm from Indonesia. I'm teaching at National High School in Indonesia, grade ten to twelve. My partner teacher is, is Julie Steve, Julie Steve from Seni High. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cleji. I'm from Brazil, and I'm currently teaching grades ten to twelve, and here I am placed at the high school, and my partner teacher is Kristi Manning, and it's been so much experience being here with you all. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Robson. Robson Barbosa. I'm from Brazil. I teach English as a foreign language for my students aged twelve to seventeen, and in here I'm at high school, and my partner teacher is Mike Karina, and I just want to thank you for the wonderful stuff to be here. Thank you.
So proud of you. That's a great job. Once again, thank you, and we couldn't do it without you, so.
Could, could you tell us a little bit about some of the things that, that you, you know, these folks are going to be doing here in the district and some of the plans? Because I always found it interesting, some of the activities they have them involved in.
Yeah, actually, our part, the field experience, is just one component of the program. They have a methodology class on Mondays, a seminar class where they learn and talk about teaching methodology and best practices. On Thursday evenings, they have a technology class, and Wednesday is their field experience. They also audit, they're allowed to select one class at IUP to audit. In addition to every Wednesday for six weeks, we have one Wednesday in so far, then we have five more Wednesdays. We're visiting the high school and Eisenhower Elementary School. They're there all day with their partner teacher. They observe. They have to do a cultural lesson, talk about their country at some point, and even if they're comfortable, they're not required, but even in the past, we've had them co-teach. We've had teachers go into the ping pong club on Fridays, and, and we had a ping pong coach last year who instructed. We've had teachers do cooking lessons on foods from Morocco and things like that, but if they're able to work it out, we'd love to have them try to co-teach all or part of a lesson with their partner teacher. And then in addition to that, there's several Fridays we visit other types of schools. We'll go to the ICTC and take a tour there. We go to the Kiskey School, and we have a tour of River Valley also lined up. But that's the field experience part of this. Do you have any questions, Ron?
No. Any questions from the board?
Do we ever get any feedback from what they've learned, what they've observed, comparing it also to their home schools and what we do at our schools and stuff? Do we, does, do you see that?
Absolutely. In fact, when we did our work with the National Council on Education and Economy last year, we were fortunate enough to have a Zoom meeting with some of the Fulbrights from last year who shared just that, like the stark differences between our, our systems and our, and, and education, and some of the similarities. And we took a lot of that information and used it as ways that we could improve, and I think they did the same. I think they looked at ways that their systems could be a little better. So it is a great partnership. You know, I got to sit and chat with a lot of the Fulbrights the other day. At the reception, I thanked again for the invitation. Could've stayed there all night, just learning. We talked a lot about the different systems and, and, you know, just culturally and educationally, what, how, what makes us similar, what makes us different. So tremendous, and I really liked, Moses gave some opening remarks, and I'm going to steal his words when I talk to the staff, because, you know, he talks about the courage to unlearn what you've learned, and, you know, just surrender to like, you know, relearning and being open to learning. And it just, it was, it was moving, and it was, it was important words that he spoke. So I've already learned a lot from them. I'm sure the teachers do and the students do, and we do have that partnership because of the work that, you know, Mr. Riggs and Dr. Riggs have done, that, you know, we have, hopefully, I'd like to have that Zoom again and, and talk about those differences and, and how we can.
And maybe be able to do it while they're here.
Well, that's, I'd like to get a, get a short, yeah, one big summary of, from each one, you know, each person.
Dr. Petrusi and I will be doing individual interviews with them too about some of the things, you know, here. I know today we had our, our second lunch together. Michelle and I meet with them every Monday for two hours, for a two-hour lunch, and we just kind of debrief on every aspect that Mike talked about. And when they talked about their visit to Indiana last week, the room just got so much more vivacious and alive, and they were talking about how welcoming the teachers were here and the students were here, and some of them said they ended up actually teaching for an hour because the kids had so many questions about their countries and school in their countries and, you know, all the different things about their countries. So it's, it's definitely a win-win situation for both sides. They learn a lot. We learn a lot. Our students here learn a lot from them, so. Tammy, did you?
Oh, yeah, I'd love to have an invitation to the cricket class. I'm just saying, I know several people who do that.
Maybe we can give the invitations to the Unity Day. Come on Unity Day at IUP in November. There'll be all kinds of dudes there that they will be preparing, and some of the other students from other countries will be.
So they're here for the entire semester, then?
Yes, they're here in the United States. They do, is it eight weeks here, Mike? And then they switch and go to Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
In Indiana, then six weeks in Pittsburgh Public.
And we're one of only three universities in the United States that were selected. We've been selected since the first year, when it was the ILEP program, and we've been selected every year. This year is also Rochester, and New York, and Vanderbilt are the other two universities. So we're, you know, we feel pretty proud that we get this grant every year and are able to host these teachers.
Yeah, I, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, Sue, because I really, I really want to kind of emphasize the, the value that this brings to the community, and, and to have it here consistently is, is terrific. And, and I, and I'm glad that IUP is able to make this happen, and, and that you folks are able to make the sacrifice and, and to come here and participate in this program. Yeah, I'd like to thank you all very much for doing that.
If I could add one last thing, I have to apologize. I'd like to mention, Dr. Michelle Petrusi is the author of the grant, and she is really the team leader, so I want to recognize her. She's in the Office of International Education at IUP, so kudos to her. It's a great job.
Don't let her retire. Okay, thank you all again. Okay, looks like we're ready for the approval of the amendments and the agenda.
Seven.
Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion's carry. The board reports there was no ICTC since our last meeting, probably here in a couple of weeks. Sue, anything from?
Saying we have not met since our last meeting.
Okay, and Tammy?
Nothing, no.
All right. Tom, looks like it's your turn.
Okay, no committee since the last meeting, so we'll move right into the minutes, the motions. I think we have five-two, five-three, five-four, and five-five. Can we take them together?
Mr. Farley, we're going to take out five-three. That, 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 that item did not come through.
Okay, so we'll ignore five-three.
Second.
Five-two, five-four, and five-five.
Um, point of order, does this need to be the safety plan as submitted or as amended?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
So, so five-four, agreed, the board approves the updated health and safety plan as amended. We amended it in our meetings before, made some minor changes.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on five-two, four, and five? Nothing heard? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion's carry. Cindy, you're up.
Policy and personnel meeting was tonight, and everything we went over, we're going to be voting on. We talked about the second read of policy two fifty-one, a first read of policy three-one-seven, creating an LPN position, review of the health and safety plan that we just approved, and a nursing practicum approval with Eastern University. We had a couple of non-agenda items, seeking outside services for some behavioral support services, and a discussion about some of our priorities and focus for the education of students in the district. So I've got quite a few motions as usual. Six, I'll try to take them all as consent. Six-point-one-three, I guess I can't take this consent because we don't have names to fill in, so I'll pull that one out. Six-point-two is the board policies that I just spoke about, the second reading of two fifty-one and the first reading of three seventeen. Six-three is approving a leave of absence for one of our employees. Six-four is appointing fourteen computer-mediated instructors to work for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Six-point-five is non-traffic citations, where administrators approve to hold that citation ability. Six-point-six is a substitute custodian list. Six-point-seven is the twenty-three, twenty-four employee handbook. Six-point-eight is a memorandum of agreement between AFSMI and the board. Six-point-nine is a resignation of Heather Vabrick, East Pike certified school nurse. Six-ten is the addition of another LPN position that, that we'll be hiring for. Six-point-eleven is the hiring of Lauren Dilts and Kristen Killen to be LPNs effective tomorrow. Six-point-one-two is the employment of custodian Tina Hall to be employed effective tomorrow. Six-point-one-four is extra duty, extra pay assignment, that Van Hoodock be hired as a baseball coach.
Thank you.
And Craig Olson be hired as a junior high baseball, or junior high basketball coach.
Okay, it's been moved in second, six-two through six-fourteen excluding six-thirteen.
Correct.
Questions, comments, or discussion on any of these items? Rob, is there anything you would like to add?
No, I would just thank the board for the approval of the LPNs. I think that's going to be a great move and provide us more stability in the, in the nurses' offices and provide our certified school nurses the ability to do their job more effectively. So, thank you for that.
Thank you to Heather.
Heather Vabrick, yeah, she did a great job while she was here. We wish her well in her next, the next endeavor.
Yes, sir. Okay, questions, comments, or just further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry.
Six-point-one-three is appointment of voting delegates for the Pennsylvania School Board Association. We need to have three volunteers from the board to have their names put into this motion before I can read it.
Before you can explain to me what a hybrid event is?
Um, I believe it's, you can either attend virtually or in person, sir.
And so what kind of timeframe is this, is this?
I think it's a Saturday. It's a Saturday, I believe. Is that right? Saturday?
Yes.
And I think it's a, a meeting that's much like a, a board meeting where they go over a lot of their business, and then you're a voting member of that committee.
So, so the purpose is in Harrisburg and here?
Or Zoom.
So, so the purpose is the PSBA is kind of a governing body for all the school, this, school, school boards in the state of Pennsylvania, and, and they advocate with the state legislature and with the Department of Education to, to deal with issues that help school boards in doing their job. And one of the key things that they do during this meeting is they establish essentially a legislative or a list of things that they would like to accomplish over the next year. They'll be presented to the delegates, and then they'll be voted on as to whether to be included in that legislative agenda or, or petitions with PDE for various, various issues. Does that help, Tom?
Yes.
That means they'll volunteer then.
Well, yeah, I was going to nominate Sue and Julie and myself.
I'll second that nomination.
And, and, and we are returning, you know, we're returning board members, and it's only, we don't have to go to Harrisburg, which is, this used to be part of the, of the PSBA board meeting.
Correct.
Um, so they're, so they, so they cut the book, the business meeting out. I think we could afford an hour on a Saturday. It better be raining that day.
There you go.
Is that okay, Julie?
Oh, yes.
She sounds so thrilled about that.
Okay, so the motion is that the board appoints Dr. Sue Riggs, Julia from Market Cuero, and Tom Harley as the IASB Board of Directors voting delegates for the 2023 Delegate Assembly. The hybrid event will be held Saturday, November the fourth, 2023.
Second.
That includes?
Yeah, especially when you zoom in.
Okay, so we've motioned in second. Questions, comments, or discussion, except for the three appointees? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Too bad. It looks like it's, yeah, it looks like six to three here, so, all right.
What are you going to let us vote?
Terry?
Yeah, there's no committee meeting report. I did that last time. The update on Eisenhower Elementary, the bid came in last Thursday. It did come in over estimate, the architect's estimate. So at next Monday night's meeting of the Building Grounds Transportation Committee, practically or possibly the whole agenda will be delegated to discussing the bid, and then possible adds or deducts if we want to do any of those.
But, but to be fair, the bids were about five percent over the budget anticipated.
Well, that's not my calculation.
No.
Depends what you calculate, yes.
Depends on what number you believe, but, but the, but the bids were not out, they weren't held landish.
Yeah, that was my impression as well. I thought it was, I thought it was.
I thought it was an eighteen million dollar estimate.
Yeah.
The construction cost was around eighteen million.
Yeah. Plus two million in, the bids came in about twenty million.
Twenty-one, one. So it's about seventeen or eighteen percent over the.
So, so the, the point is that it's at least, we have at least a reasonable shot of doing something with, as Terry said, with some of the deducts and how we manage that. And as Tom mentioned, Jared built, and wisely so, into the process a couple million dollars in contingency, and if we're very disciplined in, in how we manage that, you know, it, we have some work to do, but it, it's, it's possible to still pull this thing off within reason.
What I want to ask tomorrow is, is that, is Eisenhower's way over budget? It's not, it's within striking distance.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, moving on to seven-three and seven-four. Anybody have any objection to taking those together? Seven-point-three is window film being placed throughout the district for safety upgrades, and seven-point-four is the East Pike inclusive playground. The board authorizes the administration to order all necessary playground equipment, the complete phase one and two of the East Pike inclusive playground with an estimated cost of one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Funding for phase one and two will come from private donations, with the district contributing up to thirty thousand if necessary.
Should we modify this to allow them to do phase three if they can raise the money? I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we're restricting it to one and two. I'm sorry, a second. Yeah, you got a second. But on that, on that particular motion, I'd like to make it one-two, one-two and/or three if they can raise this money, or contribute thirty thousand.
Quick move from my chair, but that is.
Phase one, two, and three would be covered by?
The one-thirty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so that's just the one, two, and three.
Yes.
And we're contributing the maximum thirty thousand.
I accept that friendly amendment. I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
Accepted as an amendment.
All right, questions, comments, or discussion on 7.3 or 7.4? Terry, anything you'd like to add on the playground?
No, I just think that ordering it all at once is going to potentially prevent more spending because those prices are going to go up the longer we wait. So get it all ordered and get started. It's exciting.
So the concern that was brought up in public comment, then if we do Phase 1, 2, and 3, that's.
I think the concern, it is, but the concern is the timing of everything, right? So phases 1 and 2 will be completed, and then there'll be a pause.
A gap.
A gap until when the material come in. So the question is, do we want to keep the playground shut down until Phase 3 is complete? Or do we want to open the playground and then?
We could hold installing Phase 1, but there's already a pad out there of gravel, and I don't know how long that would hold.
So, yeah, we're not sure if it makes sense yet.
Phase 1's equipment is already here.
Right.
Correct.
What happens with pouring the rubber substrate?
That wouldn't happen to them. Phase 1, 2, and 3 are all in.
So we're going to put rubber mulch over the gravel that's there and then try to take it back out? Is that going to be an issue, having rubber mulch mixed in with the gravel? Because then we'll be able to get it all out.
No, it'd just be.
Just more rubber.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the rubber is not ideal for wheelchairs. It's not ideal, but it is, it is legal. The board rubber will be better. But the problem is if we don't put, if we don't put rubber down, we have to fence off this playground that we're just building, which also doesn't quite make sense either. So some kids can use it this season, and we'll finish it up next spring when the other equipment comes in.
My last question too. Sorry.
Could we, I guess, anybody could sue, could we be sued if we build Phase 1 and Phase 2 and it's not all inclusive? I mean, we're working toward doing it.
Which would be sued.
I was going to say, I thought you meant about liability versus fall or something like that. But, yeah, most playgrounds right now are not inclusive. So you guys have already taken steps towards.
To make it, right.
So the question I have, does the $133,000 include the extra expense of taking, buying the rubber mulch and taking it back out? I think that was $1,500 at one time.
That's included in there?
Yeah.
So I would think, okay, I didn't know if that was $1,500.
I think it was.
No, okay.
Okay.
I thought it was only in here.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this? All those in favor say aye for 7.3 and 4. Those opposed? Motion's carry. Julia, your turn.
Thank you. We did, for the Audit and Finance Committee, we did not have a meeting tonight. But I was wondering, Jared, because we talked about it at our last meeting, do you have a schedule for the auditors coming in?
They're coming in in two weeks to start their audit. They'll be here for about a week looking at information, and then they do go back to their office and continue to work on our audit and other audits, and then they'll be back again, usually closer to the end of October to finish everything up before we submit our annual financial report.
So that date, the annual financial report's submitted when?
Due by the end of October.
And then our next big date for budget is when? Not till January?
We'll know our Act 1 index here at the end of the month.
That's right.
It's usually kind of kicks off budget season, so we may have that by the Audit and Finance Committee in two weeks.
Julia, the only thing that I would add, when you ask about the next, next dates for the audit, for the budget, particularly the budget, this upcoming year is an election year, and I believe the Pennsylvania primary gets shifted, which means we have to make that first vote on whether we're going to go for the exceptions or accept the Act 1 index as a maximum. I think that gets changed a little bit, Jared, if I'm not mistaken.
It'll probably be early, it'll probably happen in December, preferably more than January.
Okay, and that's primarily because of the, it being the national election this, this coming year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So at the next meeting, you'll maybe have a schedule for us put together.
Yeah, I can have a schedule put together. We should have the Act 1 index, and then hopefully by then we may have some good final, perfect final numbers, but we should have numbers for how we close 2223. We're working on all that right now.
And we will talk about the reserve at the next, potential reserves at the next.
Yes, we have some pretty accurate numbers for how we end at 2223. We can have a conversation about what we may want to transfer to capital reserve.
Okay, so we know the schedule. There's a couple of motions tonight. One is extraordinary, exceptional, and wonderful, but I move that we approve the approval of bills that the current bill be approved as submitted. Jared, you see nothing unusual? I didn't see anything out of the ordinary.
No, the only thing on there that's a little out of the ordinary is there's a double bill for healthcare. Basically, we've paid two months in advance, and that was to help the healthcare consortium. They're having some cash flow issues right now with the healthcare consortium based on some investments coming due. So they asked the member districts if we could advance them an extra month in healthcare payment. It would just be credited for October, so it's not extra money we're paying, it's just an advance and payment.
That was unanimous, was it? By our all member districts?
I don't know that all the member districts did it, any who, because it was kind of at a bad time for all districts.
Yeah.
Because it was kind of, cash flow wasn't prime for all of us, but Indiana was able to do it. So we've made a payment. Again, it's not an extra payment, it is just an advance payment. So October, we really won't have a healthcare bill.
Yeah, yeah. So you have two more motions, Julia?
Okay, I can do it that way. The second motion is really quite extraordinary, and I'm delighted to move that the board accepts the $50,000 donation from the Hall Hallam Horton Foundation to be used for the East Pike Inclusive Playground project.
I heartily second.
Okay, and?
My third motion is 8.4 Affordable Care Act employer reporting that based on the recommendation of the administration, the agreement with the Ruscini Group to produce the required 2023 IRS forms for the Affordable Care Act reporting be approved at an estimated cost of $2,500.
May I have a second on those three?
Second.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on 8, 2, 3, and 4?
On 8.3, who made this grant application?
On the donation?
Yeah.
It was just a donation.
Who made the application? How did they find out about that?
It's a family member of one of the moms that is raising money on the committee.
Can we get a plaque on her?
So they will be, they'll be recognized for sure. It's a tremendous.
These are the kind of things that make this stuff happen. If somebody knows somebody, and then next thing you know, $50,000 shows up that we did not expect, which is just magnificent, that there's usually somebody behind it. So make sure that person's recognized.
Yes, sir.
Give me name.
Can we name that person?
We're going to maybe think, aren't you talking about?
Yeah, we're thinking about having a sign similar to that at Ben Franklin Playground, you know, sharing all the donor lists, maybe some type of plaque. And then we talked about also having an opening event and inviting all of the donors to that event as well.
Much like we do with the Ben Franklin outdoor classroom.
All donations are quite precious, I think.
Absolutely.
Okay, further discussion, questions, or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. We have a little more business to take care of under the closing PSBA elections. We talked a little bit about the PSBA earlier, but there are some officer appointments that we need to vote on.
I'll make the motions?
Okay.
I move that we approve 9, 1, 1, 2, 3, and 4 as written and submitted.
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, just as a point of order, these are the only people that stepped up for these five open slots, so there really isn't, unless you want to write somebody in, there really isn't much, much choice here.
Where do they put your name, Walter?
We tried to get Walter Stroh to take.
Yeah, I'm smarter than the average bear. So let's go ahead then and take a vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motions carry. There are no discussion items. Is there any public comment on agenda items this evening? Nothing heard, does not appear that anybody there. We had some enclosures this evening. Ron, would you go over our executive session for us?
Sure, Mr. President. We talked about two Act 93 positions, the AFSMI MOA Clerk of the Works service hiring, and a safety and security update from the game, the football game.
Okay, thank you. Our next board meeting will be September the 25th at 7:00 PM. We have committee meetings, as Terry mentioned, next Monday night, the 28th at 5:30, which is going to be a very, very important meeting. And, you know, certainly encourage the public to participate.
18th, September.
The 18th, correct. And then Julia's committee on the 25th. Before we adjourn though this evening, I do want to mention that this is the 22nd anniversary of the tragedy that occurred on 9/11/2001. And I'd like to ask everybody to stand and just observe a moment of silence out of respect for those who lost their lives. Okay, thank you very much. May I have a motion?
No, before we do that, is it permissible to post the bid results on the website prior to the meeting? That'll inform the public better. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.